Good evening. We are very grateful to have all of you here tonight. Thank you for your support. Superintendent?
Tomorrow night after work, I'm getting on a plane and flying back to Fargo, North Dakota, to be with my father on Veterans Day. He's 85 years old, and I'm not sure how many more Veterans Days he'll have, but it's always been a special day in our family. Veterans Day originated as Armistice Day on November 11th, 1919, the first anniversary of the end of World War I. Congress passed a resolution in 1926 for an annual observance, and November 11th became a national holiday beginning in 1938. Veterans Day is not to be confused with Memorial Day, a common misunderstanding according to the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. Memorial Day is the fourth Monday in May, and it honors American service members who died in service to their country, or as a result of injuries incurred during battle. While Veterans Day pays tribute to all American veterans, living or dead, but especially gives thanks to living veterans who served their country honorably during war or peacetime.
Please stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. At this point, I will jump right in and begin our workshop. I call on Superintendent Ralph Swenson to introduce this.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody. Boy, that's not good to have the reading glasses on and look across a big room like this. All right. I want to thank everyone for being here and for being part of, I guess, I don't know if experiment's the right word or not, but it's certainly a new approach maybe for some of you, and I, it's an approach that I'm really hoping goes well. I have a real interest in making sure everybody who's involved, and I don't really care for the word stakeholder, but as a stakeholder in our organization, this large, wonderful high school district has as much information as they need to be aware of the realities that we're dealing with in these days, and to give our board as much of a sense of what the community feels and thinks, and whatever energy you might be able to contribute to the board and to our district as we try to solve some of the challenges we face. Ordinarily, I don't like to read too much about what I'm going to say, but I've got some things I don't want to miss tonight, so bear with me as I glance down at this paper every now and then and share some information with you. Our goals for this evening are twofold. We want to share with you all the information we have about the current budget situation and engage you in helping us build a strategy for responding to that funding crisis. The second goal we have tonight is to review for the board the planning process for the planned construction of our 12th high school in the community of Alpine. It should make for an interesting evening, and we appreciate everyone who's giving their time this evening to be part of this important conversation. As we approach the budget workshop piece, which is going to be for the first couple hours of the evening, we want to make sure that everybody kind of comes at this with an appropriate mindset. Solving budget issues in a school district almost always comes down to painful decisions that often impact people. We are all about people as a school district. We exist to serve students and their families. We provide service to them by hiring thoughtful, caring people. Teachers, counselors, librarians, nurses, coaches. We hire people that provide support to our schools and communities: secretaries, technicians, classroom aides, campus supervisors, custodians, and bus drivers. We also hire administrators, and yes, they are people too. The largest portion of a district budget pays for salaries and benefits of all those people that I've mentioned to you. And so when funding falls short, as it often does coming out of Sacramento in recent history, we look for solutions, and we have to take a look at that portion of the budget. But believe me when I tell you this, that in this district, our people have already paid quite a price to try to get through this tough time. Our teachers are in classrooms with 38 and 40 kids in a lot of situations. That's hard for me, as someone who's spent 40 years in education, some of them as a student, by the way, not that old. That's a tough thing to swallow. And so we have to keep that in mind, and we have to think about that when we take a look at our realities. Many decisions we make, or decisions that become part of, any decision we make that has to do with people also has to be considered in light of what we call the collective bargaining process, or you might know of that as negotiations. We respect that process, and we respect those employee groups with whom we conduct those negotiations. This workshop tonight is not meant to circumvent that process. This workshop's simply being done to provide information to a broad representation of people from all the different groups that are part of our school district, and to generate some discussion about possible solutions to our challenges from those of you that are here. To maximize the chance for people to participate, we're going to provide each site team, each table, with the opportunity to actually experiment with some ideas in an effort to develop solutions to our long-term budget challenges. Some other folks will explain to you how we're going to do that, and you'll get to actually become Scott Patterson for a night, become our business guy, and plug in the dollars and plug in the pluses and the minuses. Let's spend more on this, okay, but you've got to spend less on that. You'll see how it works in a little while. There'll be a member from our district leadership team at each table to help you with that process, and we hope that everybody will feel free to record your thoughts, your ideas, your impressions. And I believe there's paper on each table where, at the end of the night, you've got some suggestions on what we might do to respond to this budget crisis, and there'll be a place for you to leave. And where are we gathering the paper? Does somebody know, at the front door, or over there? Over at the check-in table, there'll be a place for you to leave things behind. I've done this before in other districts. And, you know, you get good, bad, and ugly ideas, but they're always worth looking at. Some of them are simplistic, and some of them are large, some of them are small, but all of them are worth considering, and all of them are valued. So if you have a thought of some idea that you think could help us avoid applying any more pain where it hurts, and that's in the classrooms, then please help us find those answers. Our board members will be moving about the room tonight during the table session, the table talk session of the event, and they're going to be sort of silent observers. They're going to listen into your conversation. They're going to see what kind of conversations you're having, what ideas are being percolated at your table, but as board members, we've asked them to be silent participants tonight and simply to be observers. And that's harder for some than it is for others, Priscilla. But you also have laptops at each table, and that district facilitator will record all thoughts and suggestions and work on those spreadsheet, and we will collect those laptops and gather all that information, and that information will be shared with the board at a future date. Specific ideas and recommendations for either cost-cutting or revenue generation. And sometimes when people sit down to solve budget crisis, all they think about is what can we cut? Try to think about what could we do to generate more revenue. I like that a lot more. All right? Increased attendance generates more revenue. Applying for grants can generate more revenue. There's a lot of different things you can think about. Just try to be creative. Take advantage of this opportunity. There are, there's no limits to your suggestions, but there are limits in our ability to maybe make them all come true, but that doesn't mean that we haven't valued the process and valued your input. At this time, I'm going to ask Scott Patterson to begin the presentation, give you a little background on all of this, and we'll get to work. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Ralph. I am Scott Patterson. I oversee the Business Services Division for the district. One of those areas that I'm responsible for is fiscal services, and with me tonight is Ken Layton, who's the Executive Director of Fiscal Services. So we spend a big chunk of our time doing budget stuff. And if you look at the screen, you can see that we're going to be talking about three years tonight, because it's never just a one-year type of thing. The other thing that's unusual about tonight is here we are in November. We don't generally start really spooling up the budget machine until after January, when the governor comes out with his proposal, and we start doing a lot of work in the spring. But anymore, budget has just become a year-round activity, and if you've been following the state at all, you know that quite frequently, they come along and off-cycle, they do a change to the budget. So the game plan tonight is to take you through some background information first, so bear with us, because we've got to do a little bit of death by PowerPoint, and then we're going to turn it back over to you with some explanation about what we're going to ask you to do. Roll up your sleeves a little bit, have some dialogue, and try to leave some good time for you to do that. You have facilitators at your table who can help you, but you'll all have jobs in terms of taking notes, doing calculations. There should maybe even be a little calculator at your, by the way, you don't take those calculators home. If you flip them over, they've got somebody's name on the back. That's who we're going to return them to, so we know who everybody is. The agenda. We're going to talk about the guiding principles. The governing board has spent quite a lot of time, overtime, evolving these. They may evolve some more, and we'll talk about that. We're going to look at a three-year review of funding. Why are we in this mess? And you're going to see pretty dramatically that the funding that is coming to us is so dramatically lower than what the formula for school funding would dictate, you look at yourself and you go, well, that's why we're in this mess. We're going to look at what I call the baseline. We adopted a budget back in June, but a whole lot's happened since that time. We're going to score some of those things that have happened, but you're going to be part of what happens after this. We're going to tell you what happened in October. Normally, the state adopts the budget in time for us to adopt a budget, but heck, three months went by before they even got around to doing the state budget, so a lot has changed. Some for the better, too, by the way, if we can believe some of the assumptions that it was based on. We're going to talk about the reserves. We have pretty good reserves in this district. We've been spending those down. We're going to spend them down some more. We're going to show you where we are on that. And then we're going to look at how to balance the budget over a three-year model. Here are the guiding principles. Won't spend a whole lot of time, but for those of you who haven't seen it before, some of these are no-brainers. Well, we're going to focus resources on student achievement. Makes sense. We want to move forward with instructional programs. We don't want to just hunker down and get through this, because if you think about this, we've already been in this mess for three years, and we don't know how many more years it's going to be. We've got at least another two before we start turning the corner. We want to maintain our reserves at the state-required levels. We even wanted to maintain our restricted maintenance account at the old reserve level. We suspended that. We quit doing that. That's one of the casualties of the budget. We wanted to avoid deficit spending in two consecutive years. What's that mean? That means that we don't want to spend more than we take in in consecutive years. Well, we've blown by that milestone, too, and eventually, we need to get back on that path. We want to look very closely at what we're doing through time, and we know this affects people, and we need to remember that and react with sensitivity to that. There are some blanks here. If we evolve anything else tonight, we'll add those, too. Here's what I was talking about in terms of what's happened with the funding. If you look at the good old days, which was '07-'08, and hopefully, I'm not blocking the board members, that was back before there were any deficits. The state finally got back to paying us what the formula said, but then it stopped. In the next year, they should have paid us $7,000 per ADA. That's the equivalent of one student who's in class the whole year. But they didn't. They only paid us $6,600. The difference between those two numbers times our ADA, that was $9 million that we didn't get in that year. But it continues. The next year, they should have paid us $7368. They cut us again, an actual cut in funding, $29 million loss. There was a little bit of a bump this year, but we're still well below what the formula says, $23 million loss that year. If you add all that up, that's over $60 million that we have not received, that we would have expected to have received under the formula. Big number. Quick recap. What have we done? This isn't the start of the process tonight. We've been working on this, and most of you in this room know, over three years. So what have we done over the last three years? We have spent down reserves. We've used restricted funds under the state rules to help with the general fund. We're doing that to the tune of $4 million a year now. We did increase our student ADA. We had an aggressive effort over the last few years of bringing back fifth-year seniors. Very, very successful. That has helped. We've shifted funding. Some of the ideas that we've done is we've shifted utility costs to the bond program that's paying for, or that's causing those utility bills to go up as they do the construction. We've, for instance, moved school police officers over to federal grants. Their food services program has been very successful. They're now paying for partial positions in the general fund to help offset those costs. We've cut central office positions significantly through time. We've reduced allocations to site, work years, over-formula positions. We've reduced special ed, cut site classified. You'll see a pattern here, by the way. We've raised class size. It is now 37, and that, we feel that, you feel that in the sites, and those are the things that we hear the most, and we'll keep that in mind as we go through the exercise later. What do we do the next year? Well, we pulled some of those same tricks. What do we do the next year? Reserves again, more flex transfers, funding shifts. We cut site classified three years in a row, but it doesn't stop there. We negotiated some funding increases with our special ed folks. We were not getting our fair share, and we went and negotiated our fair of funding under special ed. We've banned with other districts in terms of providing special ed services. Federal stimulus funds came along, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. That was very significant, very helpful. We eliminated our deferred maintenance contribution. We basically got rid of ninth-grade class size reduction in two stages. We started school after Labor Day. We had furlough days. We reduced tutorial and summer school, and that carried over, and even more items in 10-11, to the point where we're now at five furlough days. We've raised co-pays on health and welfare. We've continued to cut in all the other areas. So you can see, significant effort has already gone on. We use the term low-hanging fruit. That's long gone. Every decision we make now is very, very tough. Here's a recap of that $4 million we take every year from categoricals and transfer it right into the general fund to help just balance the budget. We've cut summer school, as you know, from six weeks to three weeks. Adult education is contributing $1 million a year to the general fund. We've cut our instructional materials allocations. ROP is contributing significantly. We've cut deferred maintenance again, arts and music block grant. That's $4 million that's going into the general fund that didn't used to, so every program that's contributing is suffering also, just to help balance the district budget. I'm going to turn it over to Ken here and have him take you through what our baseline is.
Okay, as we move into the adopted budget, I wanted to take a couple seconds to recognize two individuals that are responsible for all the numbers on your table, and that's Audrey Mass and Natalie Schuff. Can you guys stand up real quick? Thanks. They're the ones that do all the hard work behind us, so. Now, if we move into, whoops, let's go the other way here. These numbers right here, you're probably familiar with from our June 10th board meeting. We, at that time, indicated that we had a deficit of $18 million that we were going to solve in a lot of different ways, which included eating into our ending balance, et cetera. So one thing to point out here is that the revenue seems relatively flat, and that's going to continue to a certain degree, but expenditures continue to grow. There's a number of reasons for that, and we'll get into that, but it has to do with salary increases that incur because of step and column, you know, utilities going up, et cetera. In fact, I think if we move in to this slide, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. You can see salary progression every year is $1.1 million, and that gets compounded. And the same's true with health and welfare increases. And that goes up about $2 million a year, and you've got your fuel and your utilities and your special education. On the revenue side, you see that the ADA is, we've forecasted a decline. This was back in our adopted budget. It's actually gotten worse since then, but at the time, we expected about 310 ADA decline in the 11-12 year, and that accounts for about $1.9 million. In the 12-13 year, we're expecting about 380 ADA decline, and that's $2.3 million. So you can see that that really impacts us when you have a decline in ADA. On the COLA, we'll talk about that in a minute, because there's some good news, and then there's some bad news. And then the flex transfers, on page seven of that document you saw, Ken.
Yes.
Just to make one thing clear, for those that aren't fluent in school talk, I know what that's like. ADA is, another word you might want to plug in there, is basically enrollment. So at the same time that we're starting to see things affect us from state funding reductions, we also have fewer students in our district than we used to have, and we're funded by each student who attends our school. So as that number goes down, as we have more, a greater increase in a decline, on the decline side for ADA, that also has a negative pressure then on our funding level, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
And another word that you probably want us to define is COLA, which is our Cost of Living allowance. And that's very similar to CPI. CPI is a little bit different, because CPI is calculated by taking a group of products and figuring out that cost increases over the year. The problem with that is the CPI is calculated after tax dollars, whereas COLA is calculated before tax dollars, so they don't always sync up. All right, moving on. So at June board adoption, we were asked two things by our county office of ed. One was that we had to do a resolution by September 8th that said that we were going to address this budget, we were going to identify the size of the problem, and then by the first interim, we were going to try and come up with a list of potential solutions to solve the problem in 11-12. And so that's scheduled for our December 2nd board meeting. Is it the 2nd, or maybe it's the 9th? Summer 9th?
9th.
9th, sorry. Get everyone here and there. Okay, now we move into the state budget, and as we'd mentioned earlier, things did get a little bit better when you talk about the revenue limit with the state budget. They removed that 3.85 percent cut, which amounts to about $5.4 million on an ongoing basis. Well, that's the good news. They also eliminated the effects of that negative COLA, and that was a half a million dollars. The way they did that is they took our deficit factor and they decreased it a little bit. So we were only getting about 81 cents on the dollar. Now we're getting 82 cents on the dollar. Not bad. Not good, either. But one of the bad piece news on this is that while they're going to give us $5.9 million, they're going to take $5.6 of it and defer it into next year. So they're going to tell us, you can record the revenue this year, but you can't, you won't get the cash until the following year. So that kind of hurts us. And we're also getting some SDA funds. These are one-time funds, the $2.6 million, and it's $1.3 million per year for the 10-11 and the 9-10 years. And that's more associated with special ed revenue. And then we get mandated payments. Now, the mandated payments for a half million dollars, this is about $28 to $30 per ADA that we're going to get. Right now, the county office of ed is having questions on whether or not they're going to allow us to include that in our budget. We're going to go ahead and include it, because we feel pretty certain that we're going to get that. It's in the budget, but.
Can I ask a question, Ken?
Sir.
The 5.9, we're not going to get it this year, we're going to get it next year, but is it ongoing money?
Yes, it is.
So in other words, we'll get it next year. Is there ever, I mean, is there a plan? Is it always going to be one year delayed, or is there a plan at some point where they catch up? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's a good question, because what they've done over a number of years is they initially start that out by deferring just the June payment into July, and that became ingrained in our budget process. Now they're starting to, you know, defer other money into the next year, and I'm not sure if they're ever planning on moving that back into the current year. I guess in the good times, they'd do that, but right now, that deferral is killing us. And we'll talk about that when we talk about the cash flow piece of this, because that's an important piece. Okay, so we were talking about the COLA, and the good news, bad news thing is that they're allowing us, they're removing that negative COLA in 10-11, so they're not going to penalize us for that, and that's a half a million dollars. But in 11-12, when the actual COLA is going to be about 2.1 percent, they're not going to fund that, most likely, and so that's about $2.9 million hit to our revenue. And the same thing's true in 12-13. We expect the COLA to be about 2.4 percent, but the revised budget's saying it's 1.9 percent. So they intend on funding the 1.9 percent, but again, our budget, original budget had 2.4, so they've adjusted it downward, and that's affects us by $3.6 million. So, yeah, while they're giving us 5.9 on an ongoing basis, they're going to take it away a little bit as part of the COLA reduction. But again, this should, in the long term, be adjusted to our deficit factor, and if that's the case, eventually, we'll get the money, but it won't be, we won't get to accumulate it over time.
Baseline adopted budget. But the baseline for 2010-11 adopted budget, that's knowable. I mean, that's what we're doing right now, right?
Right.
But that's, we don't have an adopted budget for 2011-12 or 2012-13.
That's true.
So.
Those are projections.
Those are projections.
Yeah, I misspoke there.
And we don't, we don't know. Protected based on what budget, though? That's what I'm getting at. We haven't got a budget yet, so.
No, but at the time we adopted the budget in June, we knew what we knew, and on that basis, we adopted a budget, and we also made a projection into the out years, 11-12 and 12-13. So now what we're taking you through are the changes, what new information do we now have to update that projection?
There's also been news coming out of Sacramento since the election that Daryl Steinberg, one of the leaders in the legislative body, and Governor Brown have already had discussions about the need to probably pull everyone in in January to revisit the budget that was passed in October, with the distinct likelihood that, what the comment that Daryl Steinberg made earlier this week is that he still thinks there's a $12 billion hole that needs to be addressed. And so the news, the best projections I'm working with here could get worse as soon as January or February.
And just so you know, the audience knows that these numbers that we use for the projections, those are used statewide, and it's usually provided by your county office of ed and school services of California, so there's some reputable institutions that provide those, so that we're all consistent across the board. Okay, so as you were speaking to Ralph, the state budget, it's based on a lot of assumptions that are really shaky. For example, they're saying that we should get another $5 billion in federal funds. You know, I mean, we'll be lucky if we get to 1.6, but that's what the budget's based on. They're also assuming 7.5 billion in expenditure cuts, but as this slide shows, you know, a third of the year's already gone by, and no one's made any cuts. So, you know, how are you going to get that $7.5 billion in expenditure cuts this year? And it's also expecting growth to be a little bit better than what we're actually experiencing and what UCLA's forecasting. So it's really shaky. This slide says 5 billion, and as Ralph was saying earlier, it's really between 5 and 12 billion is probably the gap that we have to fill on that $19 billion budget problem. So virtually, all of the new income to the district is going to be deferred until next year, and it could be at risk as soon as they come, if they decide to do any mid-year adjustments. Now, there's a lot of analysts out there, and most of them are saying, no, we're not going to have mid-year adjustments, so that's the good news, but we do expect something to happen in 11-12, so it's very well could get worse in 11-12, but we're hoping that this year, we're okay. There's a lot of people that have asked the question, what's the difference between a fund balance and the cash you have in your hands? And this slide tries to depict that. So we had $22.7 million of fund balance as of 6/30. At the same time, we only had $1.6 million of cash. So you can see there's a $21 million difference between our fund balance and our cash balance. So what that means is we have to borrow money a lot of times, and I'll show that in the next slide, but the difference between the two is expected revenues and/or unpaid expenditures. And so those two, it's more like accrual accounting for your accountants out there. It's really based on accruals that, you know, allow us to record a $22.7 million ending balance, but when we only have 1.6 in the bank. As we move to this slide right here, you'll see that the blue line represents our cash balance throughout the year. This is something that Natalie monitors on a daily basis, because you can see that it goes negative. And in fact, you'll see most of the year that it's negative. I mean, we're spending more time in the negative than we do in the positive, and it's because of the deferrals the state is hitting us with. So what we do is we borrow what's known as a TRAN. It stands for Tax Revenue Anticipation Note, and we borrowed $17.3 million this year, and that's the effect of the green line. So that helps keep us above zero for most of the year, and then towards the end of the year, when we have to pay the TRAN back, we actually have to borrow money from some of our other funds, and you're allowed to do that for a very short period of time. a very short period of time. And that's what we'll do at this, the end of this year. And then in July of next year, we'll borrow another TRAN, and we'll get back above it. So what's happening is the state's using school districts as their bank. So instead of giving us the money and allowing, you know, allowing us to earn interest on it, they're taking that money and making us pay interest expense.
Ken, I have a question. What was the authority limit to borrow on the TRANs? I thought it was 20...
Yes. You can borrow, we could have borrowed up to 20 million.
It was up to 20.
Right.
But we took 70, okay.
That's very good. Sometimes we, we can't borrow too much, because if you borrow too much and earn too much money, there's this arbitrage thing that goes on, and they start fining you, and then it costs you more to borrow money than it does to... What we try and do is borrow money at an interest rate that allows us to kind of, I think our interest, our effective interest rate expense was about 1%. You know, so it costs us about 1% on this money. And I think I'll turn this back over to Scott.
This is the slide that I really can't get my head around. You know, we talk about having a reserve, and a state required reserve. That's that amount right there, $5.8 million. You're good, you got a reserve. We don't actually have the money. And so you think about having a, almost a $6 million reserve, but we only have a million six in cash, where's all, where's the rest of it? Well, we haven't got it yet. So that's why the cash management piece is so important. That million six, that's about two days' worth of payroll. So the cash is a pretty important thing, and that's why we do monitor it on a daily basis. Okay, so what we've done so far, and I know we're running through this very quickly, and especially if you haven't lived it like we have, we've run through what we thought we knew back in June, and that's what we're calling our baseline. That's our adopted budget. Then the state came along and changed some things, and some other things changed. And on your, on your tables are a few copies of all these slides, in case we went too fast and you want to go back. And there are some other materials that I'm going to explain in a minute, but now we're going to create the building blocks for you to do the exercise. The next thing we're going to talk about is our reserve plan. And the way you read this slide is at the end of last fiscal year, you know we're on a fiscal year basis, begins in July, ends on June, we had $20.3 million of fund balance. Remember, that's not the same as cash, but on paper, that's what we had. We have agreed with our bargaining partners to spend that down to $8.5 million. So we're starting at 20, going to 8.5, that'll represent 4.5%. That's 50% greater than the state required minimum of 3. So what does that mean? That means we have an $11.8 million that we can allocate. And so remember that number, you're going to see it here in a moment. Balancing the district budget three-year model, and here's where we're getting closer to your audience participation piece. Okay. What has changed since the budget got adopted? We've talked about most of these things, but now we're going to summarize them back into a spreadsheet that we're going to have in front of us. At the federal level, jobs bill money came in. This is like Fed stimulus number two. The jobs bill money to us is going to be about $4 million, and we'll show that in a minute. State level, we're going to recap that, and then what happened at the district level. So first, we have the federal jobs money, $4.2 million. That's going to be in your worksheet here in a minute. How much of that do we have? We have 90% of it. We actually have that in our pocket. The other 10% is still due us. And anytime we don't have the money yet, we get a little nervous, because the state gets creative when they try to balance their budget. We'd much rather have it. We got 90%, we're going to go ahead and throw 100% in for tonight's exercise. Ken talked about the fact that there is a little bit of mandate money coming our way, about $28 per ADA. So we are going to, we believe, receive that. We haven't received it yet, and we always get a little nervous, but we're going to score that half million dollars. This is in a category called one-time money, because we don't know if it's going to happen again. Special disabilities funds. This used to be an ongoing funding source, got slashed out of the budget when they adopted the state budget. It came back, but only for two years. So what we're seeing here is 9-10 and 10-11, that $2.6 million, two years' worth of those payments, we're going to go ahead and throw that in the, in the pot, too. So we're going to have $7.3 million of one-time dollars, plus the reserves that you're going to see in a minute. Now, what about ongoing? Well, ongoing, Ken talked about the $5.9 million. And Mr. Hoy raised, well, if we don't really have it, when do we ever get it? Theoretically, at the end of time, we get that last $5.9 million. Ken went through the fact that our COLAs got worse. So that's, that hurts us. So anytime there's a number in brackets, that subtracts from the dollars that we have available. AB 3632, what's that? Well, it's a big mess. AB 3632 is a law that was passed, I think in 1984, and Mary Sue can correct me, that says kids, school-aged kids who need county or mental health services are to get them from the county. And schools and counties are to collaborate when IEPs are written, to make sure that that service is written in, and that the county provide those services. Well, what happened? Governor came along and said, I'm vetoing the funding. County said, I ain't doing it anymore. Here it is, school districts. We have no idea how much that's going to cost us. It is, it's a big mess right now, and we're trying to work it out at the state level. We, just to throw a number in there, we've, what's that?
I think there's a lawsuit to the governor's office pending.
Yeah, several counties are suing the, the state, and it's probably not the last suit lawsuit that'll be filed before it's all done. For tonight's purposes, we've just said, we're going to say it's going to cost us a million dollars to work through that, but we, that's really a wild card. At the district level, some good things happened. We renewed with Pacific Care, that was our provider, and it got a little better than what we assumed in June. So that's going to give us some dollars. Then we decided, when Health Net came to us, a different provider, and said, we can give you better rates in Pacific Care, we said, okay. And we got another little bit of money for that. Ken talked about declining enrollment. It doesn't affect us this year, because we use the funding from last year when you're declining, but it rolls forward and impacts us in the future in a big way. Steel Canyon has also decided they're going to buy their fiscal services elsewhere, so we'll lose a few hundred thousand dollars each year there. So the numbers that you're going to see in a minute, 7.3 million, that's one-time dollars, plus 4.9 in 10-11, 1.4 in 11-12, and .7 in 12-13. So these are what we're calling the building blocks. By the way, why is enrollment a problem? We had forecasted 19,900, it came in at 19,665. So we fell by 2.5% in one year. If that trend continues, that's going to be continuing to put pressure on us. Okay, we're getting close. You remember from Ken's slides that we projected an $18.2 million problem when we adopted the budget? How did we solve it? Well, we assumed that we would get 6.1 million out of what we call Level 1 cuts. Those cuts were basically on that screen that I showed you, all the cuts over the years. The specifics are in your packages and the tabbed package. We assumed we would negotiate reductions, and we would spend down some reserves. It came out a little bit different, but we still had a solution. But things have changed. So we are going to continue to talk about 10-11, and what we're going to do is begin to look at a spreadsheet that's going to look like this. And your facilitators can maybe start opening up the laptops and booting up your computers. Here's how you work this. Planning for resolution of projected deficits on a multi-year basis. You're going to type in your school name, may already be typed in if we did that on the laptops, each of these laptops is individually identified. Here are the deficits that we projected at the time of the June adoption, but a lot has changed. Okay, so this is the problem we're trying to solve each year. How much do we already have in place? Well, we're going to assume that Level 1 cut item of $6 million continues. On the negotiated reductions, we have negotiated five furlough days with all of our labor groups, plus we got a reduction in our healthcare costs because we raised co-pays. Why is that 3.6 and that's only one continuing? We're not presuming at this point that we're continuing those furlough days. That may ultimately end up being the case, but we haven't negotiated that. So we're only counting the furlough days in year one, and we're, we are counting the continuing savings and the health benefits as we move forward. We just looked at the page that showed all of the changes in the revenue limits and declining enrollments and ABs 3632 and the rest of that. If you look back in your package, you're going to see those numbers are already folded in. So we have reduced 10-11 from 18 million all the way down to 3.6. That's all we have to solve in this year. Problem is, it gets a little worse in the next year, and worse in the third year. So what are you going to do with your groups? You're going to be down here playing inside this box. And the facilitators have run through this, so they'll help you with this. But let me give you an example. Remember the one-time money that we looked at just a minute ago? We looked at the jobs bill money, the 4.2, the mandate payments, the half million, the special disabilities funds, and we talked about the reserves. So those are all one-time dollars that are at play, that you can use. So just for grins, what if we were to say, and you can do however you want it at your table, but what if we were to say that... I wanted to solve that first year, which was... What's that?
The back up there.
Oh, yeah, there's the 6.1. Who hit that B in there? So remember, the gap we have in the first year is that 3.6 million. So let's try to solve that. And you all have these spreadsheets at your table. I'm going to spend $3.6 million of my jobs bill money. Check that out, and solved it. So I don't have a gap anymore. I spent 3.6, I had 4.2, so I've still got some money left over, and I've resolved the first year. You're going to find that it gets tougher as you move across the page, and it's not going to be able to be that easy. And that's why we have more areas down here where you really have to roll up your sleeves. We've got, what are some potential negotiated changes and other changes? And by the way, this doesn't all have to be saving money, we've talked a lot about class size. If you want to try to solve class size, that's going to cost money. So you would make, reduce class size by one student, let's say, that's going to cost about a million two each year. So that'll be an entry with brackets around you, around it, and will work against you. But you can do that if you resolve it in another way. So you have on your table a packet of materials, reference materials that have tabs on them. 1, 2, 3, 4. And in there are some budget estimate references. So if you want to know, for instance, how much it costs or saves to change class size by one student, it tells you. How much is the cost of an average administrator? How much is the cost of an average teacher? What's 1% cost? What's a furlough day cost? All of those pieces are in there, and you may come up with items that even aren't in there, and we will be walking around here in a minute to help you out with that. So that's a piece. You also have the Level 1 cuts summarized, and you have the district budget broken down in a number of ways to give you an idea about what's in the district budget, along with how we compare with some of our comparable districts. So at this point, we're just about to let you go and do work. What's your task? Your task is to outline a three-year budget plan, and at the end, we're going to ask you a couple of questions, and we're probably going to have some readouts, we're going to try to leave some time for this, but we're going to ask you, what approach did you take? And were you able to resolve all three years? Again, these are just projections, and these numbers will change, but the size, the magnitude, and the direction of those change, of those predictions probably aren't too far off, so that's why we are where we are. But this is good forward-looking stuff, and we're ready to turn it over to the facilitators to begin the discussion. They will probably be distributing jobs to various people around the table. The idea is to document it both in a hard copy and on the spreadsheet. We're going to capture this all at the end of the session, and we want to know what your thinking is in terms of note-taking also.
Scott, just wanted to confirm that the reserves are the unrestricted reserves that we have of 11.8?
Yes. In case you didn't hear that question, the question was, are those reserves of 11.8 all available to expend? They're over and above the reserve for economic uncertainties, they're not restricted. The answer is yes, they are available. Ready, begin. Hello, everybody. Just, this is your five-minute call. We're going to try to see if you can wrap up the activity at your table within the next five minutes or so, and then we'll ask for some volunteers to do a little bit of a readout. Okay. Let's bring, bring the group back together as a big group. So you've taken about 45 minutes or so to work through some ideas. Sounds like a lot of work was going on at the tables. What we'd like to do now is to just take a few minutes to think about a couple of questions. And we're going to ask for a table or two or three to volunteer to give us some sense of what went on at your table. Now, we're going to gather all of the specifics with regard to what's on the computer, and what the notes that you took, and any suggestions that you have. So all we're going to ask is to generally tell us what approach that your table took. You don't need to give us all the specifics and, and that, but just kind of tell us what the flavor of the discussion was, and were you able to take a crack at all three years? So that's it. Who's volunteer number one? Grossmont is 01.
Okay, the approach we kind of looked at was taking a look at the first two years, using the one-time fund for the first two years, and then we decided to go with the glasses-half-full approach, how can we generate money for the third year? And do you want us to read that? Is that just overall, just wanted that?
Fine.
Okay. Do you want to read some of the ideas? Want some of the ideas?
Were you able to address all three years?
Um, the first two years, and then we came up with some money to generate for the third year. So we're not quite sure all the money there, but we came up with some money for the third year.
Were you all on the same page, or?
We're all pretty much same, back and forth, but yeah.
Volunteer table number two. Oh, wait, they just happen to be right here.
Well, we, we took an approach where first we looked at the additional actions, so the money that we had, and averaged those out over the three years, which pretty much solved year one. We were able to solve year two with coming up with some negotiated changes, something to do with carrying the furloughs all the way through for years two and three. A perfect attendance incentive for teachers who do not use subs to try to... A perfect attendance incentive for teachers who do not use subs, to try to reduce sub costs. Reducing book purchases in years two and three, which would be about an $800,000 savings. Eliminating summer school for years two and three, which would have been a million-dollar savings each year. And then also during the furlough days and days when staff is not on campus in years two and three, shutting down the physical plant, which we estimated in talking with Scott would save about $300,000 years two and three for those four weeks. And that left us basically with about 5.8 to solve in year three.
Another table? All right. Thanks. Again, you just kind of need to take us through generally how it went.
Well, it sounds pretty familiar. We had some of the same issues. The one thing we did talk about that was different was possibly creating an online charter school to compete with some of the Julian charters, some of the national university charters that have popped up. And we projected some numbers from what we're losing from our site. And so, in '11, '12, we projected an increased revenue of 2.4 million, and in '12, '13 of 3 million. And then we did very similar things of keeping the furlough days running through and ended up very similar until we got down to a zero balance in all three years. Funny math. We figured you couldn't build on the strategy of just hope, so...
Let's do one more table. You guys are going to have to flip for it.
We basically looked at ways we could generate revenue, and we made no cuts whatsoever. The four, five items that we looked at was increasing the returns on the reserve as far as an investment is concerned, and a retirement incentive, a one-time incentive that's carried by STIRS. I guess bits elimination was a piece in here as well. And then basically refinancing any kind of debt service that we have, if there's any ongoing debt service. And the biggest thing was a four-day school week, which basically reduces the... I'm sorry, adds income back of about 7 million a year. Over a three-year period, it's 21 million.
Okay. So, again, what we'd like to do is capture all of your thoughts on the spreadsheet, notes electronically or either hard copy. Again, thank you for all your efforts and your time and attention tonight. This isn't easy stuff, and I'm going to turn it back over to the superintendent for some closing thoughts.
Again, I want to thank you as well, and I had a chance to hear the conversations at several of the tables. Thank you for participating, and thank you for coming here. I think the perspectives of everybody, from the type of job you have, the type of work you do in our school, if you're a parent, if you're a student, whatever that might be, is very valuable. So, please make sure that any thoughts at all, that you have any suggestions you have, get recorded. Suggestion boxes by the door on the way out. The second half of the evening is focused on a discussion around the planning for the 12th high school in Alpine. You are not required to stay, but you are welcome to stay. We're going to take a short break to clear those who want to move on and allow those who are interested in the Alpine presentation to come forward. Thank you very much for coming here. Really appreciate it. While everybody's settling in, I'll just make a few opening comments about the next section of our meeting. First of all, kind of an ambitious agenda for one night, but both topics of such an importance that I thought to bring the board together for a special meeting made sense. And since both issues are on timelines that we're dealing with, we wanted to combine the events into one evening. And I'll thank the board for their indulgence, and for those of you who have been here so far this evening and are now sticking on for the second half, I want to thank you as well. I wrote myself a little guide for this portion of the evening as well. I've had a lot of things going through my mind. And I wrote down this sentence at the start of it. It said, "A few notes about our 12th high school campus in the community of Alpine." A simple sentence with a lot of interesting words in it. The words are "our," "12th," "high school campus," "in the community of Alpine." Take those four things apart. Keep them in your head. Our. Our school. Our district's school. Our, if I'm an Alpinian, which is a new word that I've learned since I moved to Southern California, and I hope it's not insulting to anybody, but I tend to use it a lot. The people from Alpine certainly think of this as "our." I've gotten emails. I've had phone calls. I've had meetings. I've been to meetings. I've seen editorials and newspaper articles written. I've met with groups of people, large and small. And the "our" to remember that we have to really think about tonight is "our" from a district perspective, from a Board of Trustees perspective. You are the "our." It's your decisions. It is your... You know, you are the ones who provide the guidance for our district in terms of making crucial decisions about our future. And this is our project, and these decisions will be made by our board. And the inputs and the passion and the energy that have come and will continue to come from the people who this school is being built to serve will always be valued. But the responsibility and the key decision-making will occur by these people, including the three who were just recently re-elected. Congratulations. We haven't done that in an official board setting yet. We've done it on an individual basis. Those decisions that will be made will be driven by bond language. They'll be driven by enrollment data. They'll be influenced, and consideration will be given to some of the things we just spent the last two hours talking about, the funding realities for public education in California today and in the years ahead. I hope everybody, as we go forward with this process and this school project, will let the past be the past and keep the future as our focus and the realities of our future. The next word is "12th." The project will add another campus to an already large high school district that is full of schools that are rich in history and rich in tradition. Grossmont High School just celebrated its 90th birthday here a couple of weeks back. This project needs to become a welcome part of that larger family. It needs to fit in with the schools that our district already has. The third set of words were "high school campus." We want this high school to be a fully comprehensive high school, to provide the kind of education that the young people in the community of Alpine expect and deserve. It needs to be the best high school it can be. At some point in the future, we'll hire somebody, an educational leader, a principal. Maybe there'll be a fancy new word for it by the time we do it. I'm not sure. But a person to give birth and to shape and to guide the opening of that school. I've done that. In 1993, I was hired as a principal for what was going to become the second high school in the community of Merced, California. They had had one high school there, and it had grown to 4,000 students. It was a little big. I had been the principal of a freshman-only campus with 1,100 ninth graders. That's another story for another day, but I learned a lot. So, I was hired to be the principal of a new high school. And I worked with the board, and I worked with the superintendent, and I spent a lot of time talking to people from that part of the community that that high school was going to serve. And I pulled those people into my process, and I got them engaged in making a lot of the crucial decisions that had to be made, what that school was going to be like. We need to do the same thing with this project. Some of that work has already happened. Some of you have been very engaged in this process for a while. But we go back to the word "our." Our board, our district, needs to now set a timeline, set a series of expectations, and oversee the processes that occur to get us from where we are now to the day when the first students walk into that new school. Last few words were "in the community of Alpine." I know, because of all those emails and all those meetings and all those phone calls, how incredibly long the community of Alpine's been waiting for a high school. I know about some of the disappointments, about decisions that have occurred in the past. I know about some of the hard feelings. I know about some of the dedication and effort that's gone into it to this point. But we get it. That's what this high school is. That's why this was put in the bond language. There is an interest in going forward with this project, and that aspect of the importance of this project to the community of Alpine is not lost on this board, or on me, or anybody else in this room. There are a few more words that we'll be talking about a lot in the next months and years and for whatever. Flexibility, timelines, decisions, facilities, boundaries, curriculum, all those things are going to be, things we'll be talking about. And I think that... Excuse me. The one word I think maybe of all those I would pick to really keep in the back of your mind as you talk about the project in Alpine is flexibility. There's a lot of different visions that have evolved around what that school's going to look like someday. And there's a lot of work been done about the structure of the curriculum and the way things will be delivered. I'm asking everybody to maintain a position of flexibility as we have those conversations in terms of expectations of what it might look like. We're building a school. You know, the construction of a school in 2010, '11, '12, '13, that's a school that's got to be around when we turn the century again, you know, when we get to the 2100. That school's still going to be... And Dick will no longer be on the board, but posthumously, he'll still have some influence, I'm guessing. But anyway, we're not just building the school for today. We're building the school for tomorrow, just like we're trying to do with all the other high schools in our district. We've been spending a lot of energy trying to get those schools up to speed where we need them to be, to upgrade the instructional facilities and all the things to give our kids at each of our schools the best experience we can. And some of those schools waited a long time to get to where they are today. None of them opened up on day one with everything they wished that they had. That's all I've got. And I hope you'll think a little bit about what I said. I think Scott Patterson's going to get us started. This image of the property that we're looking at for this high school is... Those are trees in the smaller picture in the bottom right. I thought they were buffalo, but I'm from North Dakota, so what do I know? Anyway, good luck, Scott.
We've got kind of a roadmap of where we're going to go, and we'll try to get through this fairly briskly. And as we've done before, there will be several pieces to this and several speakers. Superintendent just talked about number one. I'm going to hit a little bit on the bond language and the budget overview. But as we always say, the curriculum needs to drive the facilities. Another thing that is driving the facilities also are the available dollars, so that's a consideration. But this should be the primary consideration, that we're going to take you through the building schematics, how the site looks, where we are in site acquisition, timeline, boundary, and come back to wrap it up. So, we always go back to the bond language, and most of you have already memorized this, so I don't even know why I put it up on the screen. But two key points here. One is that we've got an enrollment, what I call threshold, often referred to as a trigger, that before we let a construction part of the contract, we have to be at or above the enrollment that we were at the '07, '08 C-bids, which, so you know, was the last official enrollment count before or at the time the board put the bond measure on the The other thing is buildings and grounds to accommodate up to 800 students, and that's what we're driving to. And what this does is it informs us a bit about how we go about phasing in this school. There have no decisions been made, but a lot of talk about the fact, and the superintendent alluded to this. When you open up a school, sometimes it makes sense to open it up with less than four grades because are the seniors really going to come? So, the advantage to us in that regard is that if we're going to open up in September of 2013, we will have a pretty good idea in the springtime of 2013, which kids are enrolling in the school. So, that will inform our planning process and let the board talk about the flexibility of adjusting one way or the other, if necessary, or not. The thing that I should have mentioned a moment ago is that the site development, including utilities and road extensions, that is happening after we purchase the property, and Bob will talk about that, but that is not dependent on the enrollment trigger. The only thing that is dependent on the threshold is the construction component. Mentioned dollars a minute ago. This is back from May of 2010, last time we did a presentation to the governing board for the whole overview. The original budget that was conceived when we passed Proposition U was 20 million for land, 27 for the building. And we've moved forward. Actually, that should be a 337 for the building. So, a $57 million budget. At the time, though, based upon where we were going with updated appraisals and the cost of land, we asked to increase the budget by $5 million on the land. We also were seeing that because of the curriculum design and building costs, we wanted to add some dollars to the building side. So, we added a total of $8 million, and we're at 65 million. What you'll hear tonight is there are continuing to be cost pressures on those numbers because we're now getting into soils analysis and moving the soil around. I mean, you don't really know what's there until you start digging into it and testing it. Our objective, and what we want to leave you with, is that we want to manage to that $65 million. We don't want to come back and ask for another increase to the budget. So, we do have pressures there, and that's some of the thing that'll be coming in when we talk about options for both the facility and the site. So, just a real quick in terms of the guideposts of the bond language and the budget, and I would like to turn it over to Cindy for the important point, is what goes on at that school from an instructional standpoint?
You can take either one or both of these. Do you want to sit?
I don't want to sit.
Okay. That's the changer. Okay.
Okay. Just to recap, when we first began talking about the curriculum design for the school, it was really important for us in the Ed Services Division to connect back to the group up in Alpine that had already done so much work and spent so many hours trying to figure out what the best would be for their community. They had spent many years discussing and finally coming up with what they called the guiding principles. And the guiding principles are what they believe to be the important components and the foundation for a new school. And those included, of course, connecting back with the community. It is a unique community, and this is going to be a school that services a very unique area. To integrate personalized technology as a foundation for the work being done there, that there would be technology available in every aspect of that new school. Collaboration by the teachers with the parents and with students was a third component. Meeting the need of every student, meeting that every student comes to us at the ninth grade level, not with the same needs and not with the same skills. Some come needing to be pushed, and some come needing to be pulled. And a different kind of venue for that would be a guiding principle for this school. Providing customized learning paths, again, that comes right off of the prior one, in that every student would have their own path to go on, and that the learning would be there to facilitate whatever their needs are and whatever their skills were. Also promoting authentic learning, meaning it has a basis in work. There is a tie-in to what it does for me as a student when I take a math class, or an English class, or a science class. And reflecting community history and culture. Again, the culture in Alpine is very specific, and ensuring that this school recognizes and honors that was also an important component. So, we tried to take a look at those guiding principles in all of our work, and we have tried to meet on an ongoing basis with the Alpine community as we talk about what the curriculum should look like to most be appropriate for their needs. Now, again, looking at the curriculum design, we have not made any final decisions. This has all been in the talking phase, and as Superintendent Swenson mentioned, this is designed to be flexible, a school that will indeed be able to change with time and meet the needs of whatever happens in the next 100 years or more. But we do believe that it should be a complete, comprehensive high school. It will service the Alpine community and meet the needs of those kids who want to either go on to college or go straight into a career. The rigorous academics would indeed meet A-to-G requirements, enabling them to go to whatever college they prefer. Technology-based, 21st-century learners, that having things like online courses and having a technology-based community there in the Alpine High School is a priority. College preparation as we... College preparation, as we mentioned, is a priority for all of our courses, as well as career preparation for those students who choose not to go on to college. And a personalized plan for student learning comes directly off of those guiding principles given to us by the Alpine community, which again says that every student has a path they need to go on and will ensure they get there, whether it means pulling them or pushing them along. Possible considerations, and again, these are not things that would be embedded in the Alpine High School or the 12th High School, but rather options that students and parents could look at as potentials. We've thought about and discussed the idea of online courses. We know already how many students we have lost because we don't offer as many online courses as we could. The hope is we can establish technology-based coursework there in the school, both during the school day and perhaps in the evenings. The option could also be offered for internships, again, taking us back to authentic learning and allowing students to experience firsthand what it means to go in the direction of various careers. Project-based learning is also authentic-based learning, meaning students are actually creating and doing things with their knowledge and not just sitting and getting during coursework. Another option that we thought about would have been certification courses, again, for those students who are not going on to college, being able to leave with a certification and a career choice is a huge benefit for many of our students. And college courses, we've also discussed the option of possibly having not just a 9 through 12 high school, but a 9 through 14, which would enable students to take college courses simultaneously with the option of having close to an AA degree when they graduate from high school. So again, none of those are set in stone, they're just ideas that have been thrown around and discussed at length, trying to honor the work that was done already by the Alpine community, adhering to the guiding principles, and giving some thoughts into creating a school that would indeed meet the needs of the students in Alpine. And with that, I will turn it over to Dina, who'll walk you through the schematics of the buildings.
Hi, guys. We've been up here before. Some of the fun things that I'm gonna show you right now are, this is a conceptual of what the second floor of the small learning community might look like. We showed you a rendering before in the previous board meeting, but this just gives you, we've taken it a little bit step further and shows you how what we took from what curriculum told us, that they wanted to see, and tried to give you a little bit better picture of what it could be. So, it's just kind of a look into the future of what we may have at this school. This right here is after working with curriculum, our design team has come up with the floor plan for the first floor, which shows the smaller advisories, which is what Cindy had told you about. They're the little walls that come out where we can break into smaller groups. It's got all, it's got a science lab, it's got all of the facilities that would meet the needs of what curriculum is asking for. Second floor, very similar, as you can see, there's a special ed. We've taken all of the aspects of everything that curriculum has asked for and tried to incorporate it into a design that would work for them. And as you can see, that's first floor, second floor. There's a media loft there, which I know Gary's really excited about anything that has to do with technology, so there's your media loft, so that they, we're getting into that online learning, which is one of the things that's been very crucial to curriculum. This is a, again, a conceptual picture. I thought you guys might, after having, listening to all these hours of budgets, you needed something to kinda look forward to. This is a conceptual of what, being on the second floor of the wellness building, which is the gymnasium building, working out, being able to look down, a lot of natural daylight coming in, this is your gym of the future, and it gives you the ability to kinda see where we're going with it. So, just, and it's just strictly conceptual, so we're, it's not set in stone yet. This is the first floor of the fitness center where we are right now. As you can see, it's a standard gymnasium. It's got boys and girls locker rooms, boys and girls team rooms, it's got a food service. It meets all of the requirements that have been given to us by curriculum. We've put little, all of the little pieces to it that they have required. On the second floor, you'll see that it's got a wrestling room, which is also, can be used as a multipurpose room. It's got an ASB room, which also can be used as a classroom. It's got the equipment that can be used for cardio, weight room, all of that's on there. And then as you can see in this, let's see if I can do more than one thing at a time, this area right here, that would be the central admin. So that's where you would have a principal, your MSF, your SRO, any of the components that would be put out there by the requirements of what the district needs. So we found a spot that actually works out there for them on that. Now, what I wanted to put in here, because I kinda wanted to give you a little bit of history and, yeah, Mr. Hoy.
I don't wanna stir up hornets' nest, but we're talking about building a school that will be around in 2100. And let's assume that by 2040, way beyond when I'm gonna be around.
Mine too.
Okay. By 2040, the population up there is such that we have, we've added pods, if you will, and so on, and we have a school of 2,500 kids, or 2,000 kids. Do we have to build another gym?
No.
This gym will...
This gym is being built out to accommodate the 2,000 kids in the future that we come. You can't build a half a gym.
No, no, I, that's what I'm saying, but this would seat, for instance, for an assembly, this would seat 2,000.
Well, none of our gyms right now currently seat 2,000. Right now, they do split assemblies, so, but yes, it's built on the same criteria that the current schools operate a gym off of.
Okay, so it is ready for...
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the same thing with the admin part of this. Right now, no, we wouldn't have it fully staffed for more than 800 kids, but it's got the nurses station, it's got all the components that you would have at the normal school, it's just condensed down a little bit because that's what we're building it for. So what I was getting back to here, this was the original conceptual build-out that was put into the bond language. The reason I wanted to show you this is it kinda, I can walk you through a little bit of what was actually in the bond language. As you can see, when you look at this, it shows right here, this was just for two small learning communities. That's all that was being put into the bond language. This was a smaller little part for PE. This was food service. This was a partial of an admin. We never, in the bond language, intended to build this thing completely out, and I thought it was real important to bring this back up, that in the conceptual of what we put in the actual language, which this was it, showed that it didn't have everything and anything, it just showed how it could be built out. So, I just kinda thought it was good that we brought this back out to everybody. And in the good part about it, we're not building a half a gym, we're building a full gym. We're not building part of an admin, we're building a full admin. We're not building pieces to it, we're putting all the components there, so I just kinda thought I would remind you guys on that. This is what we brought to you guys back, yeah, Priscilla, I'm sorry. Do you need me to go back?
No, let me make sure I have you right, got this right. Okay, so we, in the conceptual drawing, that accommodated the bond language as up to 800 students, classrooms...
It's just what was put in there that would accommodate a class coming in of 200, or of 800 students. It was two buildings, which is what we're still been designing for. At that point, though, it only had a partial of a gym, it wasn't a full build-out of a gym. And if you can, I know it's hard to read a little bit on there, but it shows you all the components, that was, that was all that was being planned, even back with the original bond language.
Okay, so that was kinda nonsensical, wasn't it?
You know, I didn't write, I didn't write the bond.
Well, because you're actually, you're going to, you're not gonna build half a gym, like you said, so somebody, you guys took this and really put it together to show that we're not gonna cut it short. We're going to build it for future, with a future vision and future capacity of what it could be.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Not a problem.
The original conceptual drawing looks pretty nonsensical.
And one of the things I wanted you guys to see on the conceptual, the original one...
That was used for, wait, let me, I want to just ask you one question, sorry. But that was, but that nonsensical, if I may, conceptual drawing, that was the impetus to budget planning?
You know, that would have to be a question Scott would answer, because I wasn't part of that team at that point. I didn't even have the high school at that point, so Scott might be able to answer that a little bit better than me.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dina, she, he can answer that at some point. Oh, you wanna do it now?
They're talking about the original number for when it was put into the...
Yeah, I think we had a bit of a disconnect between the first conceptual planning and the budget, because we knew all along that we couldn't build half a gym. And so, we fixed that in our later iterations of the layout design. So, we were planning originally to build square footage for the support spaces that would accommodate a larger school, and the instructional spaces that would accommodate the 800.
Okay, so, so we revamped the budgets to accommodate the actual future vision, correct?
Well, the revamping...
For the most part.
The revamping of the budget actually was driven by new information with regard to land acquisition because of the new appraisals, and the, kind of the fleshing out, if you will, of the instructional program that drove the facilities, the instructional facilities. But the update to the budget that I showed you a moment ago wasn't driven by the idea that, oh darn, we only had half a gym in the original.
Right, no, I get, no, I appreciate that part. But I'm looking at this, and I'm just curious as to, we had a philosophy that went in and took a good look at this and said, you know, well, we're not gonna build half a gym, we're going to build this out, or do a schematic that shows the future building of all of this. So, in my mind, I'm thinking for future building, we're still hung up on an 800 student capacity, and I know we talked about in 2013, we'll revisit that, but you can see where this is going to accommodate a fuller program out there, if you will, correct? So I guess my question would be, there has to be a dollar amount assigned to all of that at some point.
Right. And again, the 65 million that we showed you earlier was our assessment at that time based on preliminary estimates of the support structures for the infrastructure, if you will, to accommodate the larger school, but the instructional spaces only for the 800 level.
Right, and why?
Well, the 800 was driven by the bond language, and the infrastructure was, in the event that we saw greater populations in the future, we wouldn't have to go back and build the other half of the gym, so to speak. Now, what I think we're going to see as we talk, get further into the presentation and look at the cost pressures are, to what extent can we fully build out the infrastructure and grade out everything that we ultimately will believe, believe will be there?
Right. Well, I'm just thinking with, and I get all this, I'm just thinking with, looking at the fuller vision of building it out, I, we kind of stopped at that 800. We just stop at the instructional building, or capacity, if you will. But I think at some point, you have to have a discussion, if you're building all this, all of this out with a future vision to accommodate more students, you have to have that discussion and dollar discussion around possible more, possibly more classrooms.
Yeah, and one of the efficiencies that we've got built in is that those pods all look like each other on the inside. So, in the future, as we add pods, we don't have to redesign the building, we just have to adapt it to where we're gonna plop it.
And the good thing about it is we've got a complete master plan schematic. We've got a home for everything, so if they come, if you guys find money for us, we'll build it. It's just, you know, it's just a matter of, we've stuck really true to what the bond language is because that's what you guys voted on, and I do what I'm told. Is that scary, but I do what I'm told.
And Dina, I'm not putting you on the spot, I totally understand, I'm just looking at this conceptual drawing. Thank you for bringing it to us, because it's really evolved from what this was, minus maybe some of those educational facilities that would fittingly go in that growth, if you will.
Correct. And one of the things, just for your knowledge, when you look at that picture of the conceptual of what was in the bond language, that didn't work, and part of that reason it didn't work, and if you look at this one, you'll see, when we originally did that, we had no idea what were the constraints were with the Army Corps of Engineers. As you can see, we have two major ephemeral streams that go right down the middle of our campus. So that conceptual wouldn't have worked anyways, because we had buildings right in the middle of that, and Army Corps would have never let us do it. So, that's been part of why things kinda changed and how it evolved, was we're now building this around our ephemeral streams, so...
So, the dollars that were assigned to the conceptual drawing were the original amount, and then we upped it, but that was because of the land and the infrastructure issues, correct?
We're keeping it in line with the budget. So, this is a slide we showed you before, this is phase one. One of the things I wanted you to see is that there are things that we're working out with my teams to keep this in budget. Part of it is, we're looking at whether or not we do grade the whole site. We're looking at whether or not we only put one man bridge across the ephemeral stream, whether we need more than that. We're looking at, you know, do we put in the three driveways? Do we only put in two of the main driveways coming down, and we don't need that third one out here until a future date? We're looking at all of those items to figure out what we can do to keep this in line and budget-wise. Now, a good piece of information for you guys is, and I have to thank Priscilla again because she was part of this process, and I know Alana's in the audience, and she was also part of this process, and I would like to thank her too, was, we've now selected a lease-leaseback contractor that we're going to bring to you as a best staff recommendation in the November 18th board. And they actually, because they care so much about the project and the whole thing, they actually showed up tonight, and they've sat through our budget, and they've sat through all of this, and this is Erickson Hall, and we've got the superintendent, the project manager, the owner of Erickson Hall, Dave Erickson, Matt Gates, who's been with the Grossmont District for a long time, so they've actually come because they're now way on board with us on this. Part of what'll happen now is they will start becoming very involved with our architects, our civil, all the engineers. They're going to help find a way to do some value engineering, some constructability, find ways to get our costs or our budgets are right in line, and that takes me to the next slide, the one that I had showed you before. If our budgets come in better, if our bidding climate comes in better, we've got the ability to pull projects forward that are in the master plan, that would be approved, obviously, by you guys, you would make the decision, what do we pull forward with whatever we bring it back to and say, okay, we have savings of X dollars, what do you want us to do? So, I just kinda wanted to give you an idea, we're moving forward, where I'm very happy with the selection that we've made. I think they're gonna bring a lot to the team, and they're gonna be able to help us get down the road a little bit further. One of the things that you need to know is, we are, we're really looking at all of the off-sites, and what off-sites means, just so you guys get used to some of this terminology, off-sites is when you're working actually on the prop, on the project, but it's on the off-sites, meaning it's not project, the property we own. It's usually out in a streetway, which in our case is Alpine Boulevard. So when we talk about off-sites, I'm talking about all the work that has to happen in the Alpine Boulevard. That's a sewer line, a water line, electrical lines, gas lines, improvement in the street, there's the communications, there's a lot. So when we talk about off-sites, just to kinda get you guys used to it, it's the work that happens out in Alpine Boulevard. Then when we do on-sites, that's the part that's on our property that we own outright, and all of the work that'll happen. And part of that is we're looking at, how do we bring all the utilities in? How do we, you know, how do we get to this a little bit better? So, we'll keep updating you, bringing you back, letting you know, can we grade the whole site? Do we only grade part of the site? We've got 300,000 cubic yards to move, and we've got a lot of field to move from one side of the property to the other. A lot of you have had the privilege of walking out there and seeing, this is a different terrain, you know, there's, just from where the softball and the varsity softball down to the multipurpose field, there's an 85-foot elevation change. So, we've got, it's a, it's a challenge, but yes, Priscilla.
Do we have any mitigation that we're dealing with here?
As far as mitigation, as far as the EIR, what type, what type of mitigation?
Just any, are we dealing with mitigation?
Yeah, we are. In fact, let me just go to the next slide, and there, right there are all the agencies I've been working with. As you can see, the top two are federal, that's the Army Corps of Engineers, the fishing game, State of California, fishing wildlife, the regional water quality. That's kinda my Army Corps people. We will have mitigation that's involved in that, but we've put that number in our budget, so we've covered it. My next set is the County of San Diego, because when we work out in the street, that's their property, not our property, we'll be working with them. Padre Dam, that's for the water that goes in. San Diego Gas and Electric, that's for the gas and the electric. I also put in there the Power Link, because that's a whole different entity in San Diego Gas and Electric that we'll be working with, that we are working with. Communication... San Diego Gas and Electric, that's for the gas and the electric. I also put in there the Power Link because that's a whole different entity in San Diego Gas and Electric that we'll be working with, that we are working with. Communications, AT&amp;T, the cable company. County of San Diego, the Alpine sanitation department, because we've got sewer issues. The Alpine Fire Protection District. DTSC, which is, you know, you guys are all used to the verbiage on that, Department of Toxic Subjects Control. I'm just about done with them, though. Come the end of January, I'm getting a clean bill of health on that property. So, we're just about off the end of that one. DSA, which is the Division of State Architects, that's who governs us and approves our plans and makes sure that we build this, anything we build for the school district is billed to codes and to student safety. CDE, you know, California Department of Education, you guys are all very familiar with them. And then, there's the Office of Public School Construction. And then, there's the other interested parties. Vehos, I've got them very involved. Saquon, I've had them involved. The Alpine High School Committee, they've been very involved. There's a lot of other parties that have been involved in everything we're doing. We're doing a real good job keeping the balls in the air right now. So far, we haven't lost any. But, I just wanted to give you an idea. These are all the different agencies we work with. So, when you guys make decisions, these are all the people that we're kind of communicating back and forth with. So, I just kind of thought it was a good slide to throw up there for you. And I'm going to turn this over now to Bob Kiesling.
Thank you, Deana.
Yeah, we thought we'd give you a little bit of status of the property acquisition. So, we've got six parcels to buy. Three of them have already been purchased. The ones on the left-hand side, they're in green. Those are actually the difficult ones, the most difficult ones, because they had homes on them and people living on them. The other ones are either vacant or they had tenants on them that the tenants have all been relocated. So, we're right now into a process of obtaining the last three parcels on there. This will end up in a court case, eminent domain case. And that's been filed here recently with the court for those other three properties. So, the property is moving along on schedule. It's, there's no significant issues that would slow down the project based on the property. The biggest single thing would be the cost. Could be determined by the courts at the final verdict here, if you will. And that may be more cost pressure on the program depending on what that comes in at. So, we have allowed some leeway for that land cost, but that's still an unknown. The other thing I want to go over with you is the schedule. The schedule is still marching along pretty much the way we set it out originally. This just gives you an idea of what the different milestones are. The key ones are still in the design process, getting that design into DSA and out of DSA. We're looking at doing this in two parts. One part would be a grading contract and a grading of the site. The other would be the actual building construction that would go at a later date. There's, as you can see, there's off-site issues that Deana mentioned before. That would be getting into the streets and making sure that we got all that work done. That's moving along smoothly in terms of the design and the permitting of those things. Right now, the way we're set up is we're set up to do all the design and the pre-construction services prior to the trigger mechanism coming into play. Once we get that resolved, then we'll start any of the physical construction, the hard construction. So, we're going to purchase the land, complete the design, get all the permitting, get everything ready to go for the December date when that becomes official. And then, there's other pieces that need to be added in here. And that's typically, when do we assign the principal to the school and get that up and running? And other pieces that are non-construction piece, this is just the construction timeline. Any questions on the site or the construction timeline?
I have a question. Refresh my memory on the adaptability timeline. Should we see that we have to build in the future for a third pod, for example?
Right.
Cost and timeline.
Right. What we're thinking is that the typical construction, the way we do what I'll call a macro plan, is it takes a year of design and it takes a year to construct a normal project. Right now, the design is all taking place on the pods, the way Deana approached it or Scott mentioned, that they're all the same. So, the design timeline is nowhere near a year for either the design or the approval from DSA. So, what we're saying is that if we find on day one that we have additional students, we could easily have another pod in place by the time those students, you know, put the pressure on so that we would need another pod. So, we don't see that as a problem. You know, just an issue that we have to deal with once we see how many students are going to show up.
Sure. And what would the cost be for a third, to submit a permit for that?
Well, the cost would be the same in terms of the general construction. What would be different would be the design cost would be a lot less.
Less.
And the, any of the other things that we'd have to go along with it, whether it's DSA approval or the permitting processes for any of these things would be a lot less.
Okay.
And the time would be a lot less.
Okay. A lot less, maybe six months?
Yep, for the design, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
DSA right now is taking four months, by the way. The DSA is on a three-day-a-month furlough for all of their people, which is huge. You know, three-day-a-month is a killer for getting anything through their organization. So, they're right now running about a four-month lead time. But, once they've gone through all the issues with a pod, you know, an educational facility there, issuing another one, you know, they won't have to go back through all the issues. In other words, we'll know all the problems that they've identified with the first one. And so, a third one would be very simple to get through. Any other questions on this? Turn it over to Gary.
I'm going to jump in real quick before Gary, just to comment a little more on timelines and other sorts of issues. I think the next big piece in the timeline process for the board to be looking at is that at the December board meeting, we will come to you, we believe, by that time, the state will have provided us with the completely authenticated enrollment data from October of this year. That is normally the time that that report is provided. So, we will provide you with that information at the December meeting and that will be the information, of course, that will meet the trigger for, as described in the bond language. Just giving you, I mean, it is a fine line and it's an interesting thing, but the board needs to be prepared to have some conversations around that fine line. It appears that we will meet the trigger at this point. But even then, you have decisions to make about how you go forward with the rest of the process, about everything from completing property acquisition to moving forward. All of those things that Bob just described to you are all things that you need to be clear in your mind about the timing as you move forward with those various pieces of this project. Other things will come into a separate timeline that we'll be talking with you about as we go through the spring and the summer. In terms of the school itself and the staffing of the school and the bringing someone on board at a certain point in time, I would hope at least a year before the opening date, to really take ownership of the project from a school leader's perspective, whatever that might look like. And then, you're going to hear in a few minutes here from Gary about the boundary committee. And that boundary committee, well, I'll let Gary do his own presentation, don't want to take away. But, one piece of that, I hope, will be at the conclusion of the work of our boundary committee, we will have identified who's going to be a student in the attendance area for a high school in Alpine. Once we have that identified, those people need to become really clearly identified and engaged in the process. And I don't mean just the community members. I mean, the kids. There's young people out there right now that are fourth graders and fifth graders or whatever. I haven't done the math, but who are someday going to be students in a school that's built in Alpine. We want to find ways to get them engaged in those decision-making processes once we set a date for the actual opening of the school. And all of those things are in your hands now. They're in your hands to make those kinds of decisions and set those dates. And that also includes the fun stuff, you know, the school colors, the mascot, the name of the high school, all those sorts of things. All those things is fun. It's a fun experience to engage the community in that process so that everybody has a real sense of ownership for the school when it eventually opens. Gary, tell us about the boundary committee, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. What I'm going to talk to you about tonight is recommendations for the boundary committee made up of stakeholders. And I understand that this is a very, as you understand, this is a very, very complex issue. There's going to be a lot of anxiety and a lot of emotions as we head into it and probably as we go through the process. My hope is that when we conclude the process, we've got, we have consensus and we've got a group of people throughout our Grossmont District community who feel like they've been heard and they understand what decisions have been made. The committee does not make the decisions. They make a recommendation to the board. A very brief timeline, would we begin meeting with the stakeholders committee in February of 2011? Hopefully, conduct four or five meetings with that group and those are open, public meetings. The committee will conclude ideally in April, probably in May, and bring a recommendation for the board to vote on in June or July of 2011. Obviously, timelines are flexible, but that's our goal. We also talked about some of the positions we'd like to have. Vince O'Hara, for several times, has been our demographer on boundaries. He's been hired as a consultant and he's collected a phenomenal amount of data that we'll be sharing with you and the committee and the community. Vince would be a non-voting member, but a great resource. We've talked about trying to identify a committee chair that's a member of the community, not necessarily a member of the district, and someone who's a strong leader, a neutral evaluator, and who could build consensus. So, hopefully, we'll be bringing you some people that we have in mind. Also talked about the superintendent assigning, selecting one, two, or three district office staff folks to be resources on the committee. Talked about the board selecting two board members as non-voting members. You get to vote in June or July. And those could be the same board members every committee meeting or you guys could rotate through or however you would like to do it. We also talked about having three reps from each high school, comprehensive high school site. And they would be three site administrators, three certificated staff, and three classified staff. And we would just randomly pick whether the admin certificate or classified, which site they come from. Also talked about having two Grossmont parents on the committee. And they would be from, selected by the PTSA or PTOs. And also, along the same lines, the Alpine PTSA sending us two representatives to be on the committee. And we would ask the tribes if they would like to have representatives from the tribes. That would be about 16 to 18 voting members. And again, they're voting on the recommendation that goes to the board. What we don't want is a vote that looks like eight yes, seven no, and one abstained. That's not success. What we're looking for is consensus, where everyone goes, "I could live with that. That makes sense. They answered my questions. They heard my input." And yeah, this is what we want to send up to the board. So, we're looking for consensus even though we're calling them voting members. We would also invite a representative from all the feeder districts, again, not voting, but that they would participate in the committee meetings and hear what's happening because it affects them and their community and their students. Some of the things that we'd be bringing back to the board and being, ask you to think about tonight and for the future, the board will continually receive reports and be informed throughout the process. And of course, they'll have two board members at every meeting, if you'd like. We need, obviously, to determine the attendance area for the high school in Alpine and also think about how that affects all the other high schools. Because once you draw that boundary, for whatever number of student it is, you're going to affect other schools and you'll have an impact. And so, we'll have to look at those attendance area for all the schools. One of the things to consider and in the future, give us direction on, when I looked yesterday on the district website, the student enrollment difference between our largest high school and our smallest high school yesterday was 1,256 students. Which is just a, yes, that's the range right now from our smallest to largest. So, a question for the board in the future will be, you okay with the enrollment range of 1,200? Would you rather have it 900? Would you like it to be 300? What would you like it to be? And you have to remember, if you're trying to enroll 1,800 students in a high school, for one school, that boundary would probably have to include 2,800 students because of how we have migration right now. Another school, if you want 1,800 students, you might only be able to build a boundary with around 1,200 or 1,300 students because of the migration. The migration rates from students who live in a high school area to where they go to high school ranges year-to-year from 30% to almost 40%. So, some of the questions will be, how do you want to deal with that? Are you okay with it, how it is? Do you want to do it differently? So, there'll be a lot of questions over the next seven, eight months. And there'll be a tremendous amount of information and input. And I appreciate your folks' help on this. It will take our whole community to make this work and be successful. And I'm going to, I'll answer questions if you have them. But, I'm going to kind of close out where I started my presentation. This is a very complex issue. And there will be a lot of anxiety. And if we do it right and we listen and we speak our minds, we should be able to build consensus and make this palatable, understandable, and very favorable. So, thank you for your time. And I know I've got some questions, so.
This is, I'm not sure this is a question as much as it is a request to the superintendent and the staff. I would like to see, I know I don't speak for the whole board and we're not in a decision-making process tonight, but to me, this is a big deal. And it's something that we need to talk about. The issue of the boundary for Alpine is a small portion of the bigger issue. The bigger issue is, you know, the size of all of our schools, the boundary for all of our schools. Alpine impacts that. And I think we, as a board, need to meet, or at least have an agenda item, where we spend some time discussing what we want to see. Because as you point out, you know, we have this large discrepancy between our largest schools and our smallest schools. And I look at that as an academic issue, just as much as it is a numbers issue. A small school, I mean, there's an optimum number somewhere there where you can offer AP Calculus. You can do that at a small school. There might only be 10 students and therefore, your history teacher has 45 so that you can balance out. So, there's an optimum number somewhere out there or where we can offer the quality programs that we want to offer and still have a reasonable size without being, you know, 2,600 or 2,800. So, I think that we ought to have an agenda item on just what direction we want to give to the boundary committee. Is the boundary committee only supposed to figure out Alpine? If that's the case, it's going to impact the rest of the district whether we like it or not. Or is the boundary committee supposed to take a look at all of our boundaries, decide what are some things that we can do? Because we do have that issue of in-migration, which we, you know, we might have to address that in some manner also. And I know that my colleagues on the board know how easy boundary issues are.
Yeah.
And how little concern the community will have over what we decide. Nevertheless, I do think we've got to do that because it impacts the academic programs of our kids. Anyway, that's-
If I could just respond. And there is a plan to do exactly what you've asked for and your questions are exactly identifying the issues that we have to respond to. My plan at this point was to try to start providing you with some information at the November meeting, put an agenda item alongside the boundary committee on the December agenda to have this discussion, but to give you some information prior to that so you can start to contemplate the possible issues to challenge this committee to accomplish. And, you know, it's an interesting thing to talk about because at the same time, we're talking about balancing enrollments out in our district. We're talking about adding a 12th school and what will the enrollment be there? And how will that fit in with the rest? And we know we're looking at it as a long-term thing. And it all interacts and it's very, very complex. When that boundary committee sits down for the first time, and it was in January or February, I think our plan was, Gary, for the first meeting was February?
Yes.
February. We hope to be able to give us real clear guidance by that time, exactly what their challenge will be. So.
Have a question. And thank you for clarifying really what the role of the boundary committee is going to be for the whole district. On the makeup of the committee, you know, Dick had just made a comment. Since we are voting on it as board members and we're going to get weekly reports, I would like to almost see that we have two or three, well, a site administrator, certificated and classified from the middle school up in Alpine be a part of that. It is their community. I would not throw them in the, lump them with the invite the representatives from the other feeder districts only because- from the other feeder districts, only because it, well, maybe I'm talking out of school. I'm just thinking because they don't have a high school in that area yet, and they might be able, I don't know.
Well, they are attending high schools somewhere.
So, I don't know. I guess if you treat feeder districts all equally as non-voting members, but all of our other feeder schools have high schools in their communities.
And we can discuss the specific.
Yeah, just, I just want to throw that out there. Maybe forego board members, if, I mean, that's up to the board. And allow maybe two site administrators, certified or classified or something from the current middle school up there to participate.
This is what you're thinking about doing. What I would like to see is what you're actually, you know, when rubber meets the road and you give it to us, this is what you want to be the committee, so that then we can pick it apart.
Of cour, of course. What we're giving you tonight is a concept for it and looking for some feedback from the board before we actually go forward and invite anybody to be on it and that sort of thing.
I think I may have talked to you about this. I'm, I'm a little reluctant to have board members on. I know that we're not, but you wanted some feedback. And we're going to eventually have to vote on this anyway. And it seems to me if we were on the committee and then it become almost, well, it's two votes, I mean.
Yeah, we don't intend for you to vote.
You've already decided, if you're on that committee and you come to a consensus, you know where two votes are.
And the board members are non-voting. They would just be places to sit. It's on the, you know. So, we can, we can change that, we can change that. It's a public meeting, anyone can come and sit and watch, but only the voting members will vote.
I think it's a great start to the rebalancing, if you will. So, it's just something I think we've put off, because it's, like Dick said, we don't understand how much fun it's going to be.
Well, it is, though, Gary, you are aware that your name will be there out in front. And we will refer all questions to you.
I will try to keep moving as fast as I can. Happy to help. Anything else for me? Thank you very much.
I think I, there we go, we're back on again. I want to give the board a chance to make any comments or ask any questions that would provide you with clarification in terms of the work we're going to try to prepare for you in the next couple of months regarding this and decision-making and those sorts of things. Is there anything right now, and if, go ahead, Priscilla.
Yeah, I think Cindy had mentioned, or you had mentioned about K through 14, the program up there. What, if any, work have we done with our community college district for, we've had the discussions peripheral, I think everybody has, for a satellite campus up there? I don't know how that would work. What are the classes that would support that?
We've talked to, I've talked to a couple of different people from both Quimaca and Grossmont campuses. They are very, excuse me, they're very interested in being partners with us on that campus, as well as some of our other campuses in the district. They, however, also qualify that with the reality of their funding situation and all those sorts of things. They're having a hard time staffing to meet the needs on their own campuses right now. So, it's just one, there's certainly an interest. It would certainly be a healthy thing for them if they were operating in normal times. So, I think that'll probably happen when it's ready to happen.
Exactly, I understand that. But it'd be interesting to see along the lines what that would look like. So, it's kind of, I know we're in tough times, but it's part of that forward-thinking vision and how that would, how that would work. So, somewhere along the line, if.
It might even be that the kids would access community college courses.
Online.
Online.
Exactly.
As opposed to, you know, more classroom space for, and a faculty member having to drive up the hill.
Okay, just a thought.
Not that there's anything wrong with driving up the hill, but.
Just a thought on that. And then what's the budget for the curriculum that we have in place now? The idea?
There, we don't have, we didn't, we have not adopted a curriculum idea.
Okay.
So, there is no budget for it.
Okay, so we're starting with what we have?
Well, what we have, what we have is an awful lot of study that's been done, but we have nothing that's been adopted. And we have nothing ready to recommend to you.
Well, I just have to tell you, I love the gym. We saw that up in Seattle when we went, I think, I don't know if you guys saw it when you went, indoors. Of course, Seattle is indoors gyms, but.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Anyone from our visitors from Alpine, any questions or comments? I think we've kept everybody long enough. I appreciate everybody's participation this evening, and I'll turn it over to President Shield to draw us to a conclusion.
Meeting adjourned.